Hey, what's up everybody? And welcome back to the Sanctuary. I'm Professor C. And we're going to do some more AMP today. Specifically, I'm going to take a tour through all of the organelles that we find in human cells. So, there's a lot of stuff to do here, so let's get to it. Let's not only talk about things we know, and again, we can bring that up, it's good to do. We see on the outside of a cell, the membrane, I'll just put an M at this point. We've talked about a membrane quite a bit in detail. We also see this ball of soup here in the center, filled with some squiggly wiggly's that we call DNA. This would of course be the nucleus. So I'll put NUC here, to remember there is a nucleus in the center. And then, the title of the slide here, cytoplasm, is all this stuff in between the membrane and the nucleus. So, where is the cytoplasm? All over the place. It's anywhere in between the membrane and the nuclear envelope, which is the structure that makes up the bowl that's holding the DNA. Alright, well, what's going on there? Well, it's better to ask, "What's it made of?", and it kind of tells you, when I show you the next little blurb here, that it's water, is what it's made of. And sometimes you hear this watery part of the cytoplasm called cytosol. I don't use that term too often. It's easier just to call it cytoplasm. But remember, it is watery, watery, watery. And we know that water runs metabolism. So, the cytoplasm is the main place where you see metabolism occurring inside of a cell. Alright, so, it's not just water though. There are some machines floating around in the cytoplasm. This doesn't show all of the machines we need to talk about, but I do see some things inside of this cell. This little purple ball, and these little guys walking around here, and this little ball with little green balls in it. These would be called organelles, quite often. Sometimes you don't go that far, and you just call them structures. But, we're going to talk about the machines inside of the cytoplasm that help do the metabolic work, help do the work of the cell to keep it homostatically, within balance with its environment. Alright, there will come a point here, where we talk about a membranous organelle versus one that is not membranous. So, to define it really quickly, is just to say, a membranous organelle is something that has either come from a membrane, like it's membrane-derived, or membrane-bound, or perhaps it grew from a membrane of some type and pinched off of it, or pinched off of itself after pinching off of a larger membrane. One trick to learning what is a membranous organelle and what isn't, is to just see a picture of it. So, if I see something that kind of looks like a squiggly thing, almost like ribbon candy, looks like, if you're familiar with that, this would definitely be a membranous organelle. If it's got folds, or squiggles, whatever word you want to use that describes that. Also, things that are ball-like are often membranous organelles. Now, depending on the artist, some things that are non-membranous are drawn as balls, but we'll cover that when we have to. So, kind of a general rule, if you see pictures of a cell, and you're trying to figure out what this particular organelle is just by looking at it, if it's squiggly or ball-like, it's probably membranous, or membrane-bound, or membrane-derived. For instance, a mitochondrion, it looks like a jelly bean with some squiggles inside of it. So you see that squiggly look to it. ER, there's two different flavors of it. There's a RER and an SER, but these look exactly like ribbon candy. They look like that. Sometimes you may see them drawn, kind of look like little tubular things. Kind of like this. But still, it looks a little membranousy, right? It looks a little wiggly, a little curvy. Golgi bodies, again, very similar. Look like this. You may see little balls bubbling off of it. And we're going to see much better pictures of this in a moment. I'm just trying to illustrate that this is how to spot membranous organelles. Vesicles are literally little boats, little balls of material. Proxosomes, lysosomes, I could have added to this as well. Looks like I did add it to this as well. Little ball-like organelles. Okay, so a membranous organelle means it came from a membrane. They usually look squiggly, folded up in some way, or ball-like. Alright, if you're non-membranous, it just means you weren't derived from a membrane. There are a lot of varieties here. And there are many things I could put on this list, but, just to keep it simple, a centriol is made out of protein. It's not derived from a membrane. Many proteins. Ribosomes are made out of RNA, not membranous. The cytoskeleton is made out of protein threads largely, so not membranous. Cilia flagella, I could mention, are also proteinaceous, made out of protein, and are non-membranous organelles. So, the nucleus, again. Again, more of the nucleus? Yes, again. Do it till we know it for sure. We've got a membrane on the outside. I'll put NUC for the nucleus here in the center. And then, of course, in between is the cytoplasm. We don't see any type of organelle whatsoever in this picture. It's nice and clean, just showing us that beautiful nucleus. Well, what is a nucleus? Well, we mentioned it before, but let's get real specific. It is the genetic library. Remember, don't just say it's the brain of a cell. This very rarely works. It is a safe, if you want to think of it that way. That's a great way that I think of it, as being a safe. And what's kept inside of our safe was something very important, like DNA recipes. Your DNA is kept inside of the nucleus. And these recipes, of course, are going to tell our cells how to make the many, 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 many proteins that we need to keep our cells alive. So, this is a library of information. And if you think of it as being a safe, it's easy to think about how it's built. So, most cells are uni-nucleot, right? Uni being a root for one. So, most cells have one nucleus, just like these cells in this image. A red blood cell, if you could see one, and we will in much later discussions, don't have any nucleus at all. They're a-nucleot, A meaning not, right? They're not, they have no nucleus. Well, why not? Well, what's a nucleus for? Well, it's a safe that stores recipes to make proteins. So, a red blood cell must not be interested in making proteins. It has another job to do altogether, and it has nothing to do with creating proteins, right? So it doesn't need to tag along a nucleus. When it's a little baby red blood cell, it does have a little nucleus, and it kind of spits it out later when it becomes an adult. But we'll see that in much, much later talks. So, some cells, like liver cells, you hear on this list a lot, cardiac cells, those of the heart, have many nuclei. Sometimes you'll see liver cells have four nuclei inside. So what does that tell you? Well, if the function of nucleus is the recipe to make proteins, we must be making a lot of proteins inside of a liver cell. We must be making a lot of proteins inside of a cardiac cell. Alright, so it's good when you see a picture like this not to be confused about where we are. This big giant purple ball that this arrow is pointing to, that's the nucleus. And then, this out here, that's the cytoplasm. Out here, and then way, 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 way over here off-screen, way over there somewhere is the membrane, way out there. So, we're not even close to the cell membrane, it's over in another town. We are zoomed way in on the nucleus right here. And that's what that giant purple ball is, is the nucleus. So, if you look very closely at that purple ball, and I'm talking here, this thing that I'm drawing my pen mark around, this is the nucleus. It has two, two membranes. And you can see it right here, anywhere you pick. I'll just inset right there. You can see there are two layers that make this up. This is called the nuclear envelope, and that's the title of the slide here. So, the nucleus itself is not just a single membrane, but a double membrane. And that's the first statement there. It's a double membrane that protects the DNA. Like I said, it acts as a safe to protect the DNA. Where is the DNA? Well, it's all this kind of purple hazy stuff. That's the DNA. No, it might not look like what you're used to seeing, but that's a good, good way to picture it. Just kind of looks like a purple haze. Now, what's this guy in the middle? That's something different. That's something different, we'll get there in a little bit. That's largely a big pile of RNA. There are pores, and you can see them. I'll circle one here. I'll circle another one here. They kind of look like little flowers. Those, of course, would do what it sounds like a pore would do. They would let things in and out of the nucleus. But, there's going to be some rules to it, of course. Just like we saw with the membrane, there were rules of who gets in and out. Notice also, I can draw a circle right here. And you can see this blue stuff that seems to be spilling out from the purple stuff. It's growing from the membrane. There's a really good example of what I would call, and what the lecture calls, a membranous organelle, right? This blue stuff. This blue stuff is called RER. Rough is what the R stands for. And it's called rough because it's got these little dots all over it. Like there's pepper all over it. And these little dots are called ribosomes. So I see a bunch of things on this image. Not only the nucleus and its double-membraned nuclear envelope, the DNA inside, the nuclear pores, but I also see this blue squiggly, looks like ribbon candy, rough ER, growing off of that outer membrane. Alright, we know inside of the nucleus, we find DNA. However, DNA is not always stored in the form of chromosomes, which is what you see on the background of this image. But DNA inside of a human cell is actually rarely in this state. It's usually in another form. So we have to briefly discuss the two types of DNA, chromatin versus the chromosome form, which you see again in the picture. So, both of these can be found inside the nucleus, but not at the same time. Most of the time, 90% of the time, DNA is in this chromatin state. And it's a very uncondensed state, kind of like almost a spaghetti form. And it's in this condensed, sorry, this uncondensed state because it can be used in this form. So, we can make a picture here, if I can get some yellow ink up. I could say chromatin looks like spaghetti. And it's very open, unpacked, uncondensed, and we can read it, use it. So I'm going to say, this is the usable form of DNA. Now, some of the time, but only 10% of the time, a cell is going to change. The DNA itself will change. It will condense into thick bars. Almost looks like an X sometimes you see, as you see in the background of the slide. These are called chromosomes. So only 10% of the time, you see DNA condense to this ultra-packaged-up chromosome state, which I drew with that yellow X right there. So, this is a movable form. And that's the difference. Chromatin is the usable form. So, 90% of the time, we're in this form. 10% of the time, we need to get our DNA into a movable form. Why would we do this? Well, sometime right before we do cell division would be the idea. And that's what it says here. These chromosomes are now easier to move when we start mitosis, the process of dividing not only the nucleus, but later the cell too. We're going to learn at some point in here, some proteins are necessary to do this. And I'll write their name right here. Histone proteins are necessary to transform from this open, uncondensed state to this very, very compact condensed state. So, two forms of DNA inside of a human cell, chromatin and chromosomes. Three, two, one. Okay. I mentioned a little bit ago that this chunk of RNA that's in the center of the nucleus is something different. And it's called a nucleolus. Unfortunately, that looks and spells and sounds nearly like nucleus, but it's called a nucleolus. And there could be multiples of them, there could be nucleoli, but in this picture, we just see one nucleolus. Some people call it a nucleolus. And again, it's potato, patato, say it however you want to. Dark clumps of R RNA. And this little R doesn't stand for rough now. It stands for ribosomes. So, the nucleolus, or the nucleolis, has something to do with creating, assembling, synthesizing ribosomes. Once those ribosomes are created, we ship them out through those nuclear pores. And you can see them again accumulating all over this rough ER. And some of them are just kind of floating around or stuck to the membrane, the nuclear envelope itself. Okay, the ribosomes actually are not little dots. They're often drawn that way, just for simplicity's sake. But if you look really closely, they're actually two different things, right? Things is not a good science word. So we'll call them subunits. Two subunits of R RNA. We know this is created inside of the nucleolus, and then shipped out to the ER. Or to the, could they just float in the cytoplasm if they want to? The thing here is, there's a large subunit, because it's the big one, and a smaller subunit, conveniently named small subunit. You could call these other things too. Sometimes, in fancier classes, they'll call this a 40S subunit. And they'll call this a 60S subunit. But that's more advanced, and we'll get there when we need to. Okay, so, we talked about the rough ER, and how it had ribosomes peppered all over it. These would be called membrane-bound ribosomes, the ones that are stuck to the ER. However, I said, they could be just floating freely in the cytoplasm. And these are called free ribosomes, that are just kind of floating around the swimming pool, not stuck to the ER. But regardless of where they are, whether they're membrane-bound on the ER, or they're floating in the swimming pool, they're both doing the same thing. They're both building proteins. So whenever you see a ribosome in any picture, it is there for one purpose. It's to build proteins. And we're going to call this translation in a few talks from now. But, that's the concept. Ribosomes synthesize proteins. Okay, here it is formally now. And again, it's good to take a pause, look at the picture, and see where we're at. Let's just see what we know. We know that this big purple thing here is called the nuclear envelope. And the whole thing that I'm circling here is called the nucleus. We know this little ball in the center is called the nucleolus, right? So we have the ball of RNA, nucleolus, creating ribosomes. We see the DNA being kept safe inside of the double membrane that we call the nuclear envelope. We see the little pores, nuclear pores, that are allowing certain things in and out of the nucleus. So, we've been there, and we've actually been here too, right? We can focus in right on this yellow stuff with the red dots, the pepper all over it. We know the peppers call ribosomes. We know where they were made, the nucleolus. And we know what they're doing now, is creating proteins. So, let's be a little more formal, and talk about exactly what the rough ER does. So it does manufacture proteins, no surprise here. Secreted, of course, just means it's going to be squirted out of the cell. We saw that when we talked about transport in our previous talks. So all secreted proteins are created in the rough ER. Remember, you could just call it RER if you don't want to say endoplasmic reticulum, which is a mouthful. So, some membrane components, like integral proteins, phospholipids, these are made here too. So think about membrane components made in the rough ER. And what it's going to do, it's going to create this product, protein, right? Integral proteins, secreted protein. It's going to put them inside of a boat. And this boat's going to be called a vesicle. We mentioned this when we talked about cellular transport in a previous talk. So I've got these vesicles, and they're going to start moving somewhere, right? Wherever they need to be delivered. Probably they're going to end up heading toward the Golgi body at some point, which is an organelle, we'll see in a minute. This little green fella over here. So, we're going to take these products that are made and ship them over to the Golgi. And that's what it says, packages proteins in vesicles, and transports them to the Golgi body for processing. That's the rough ER. Now, the smooth ER is a little bit different. Here, you can see that, first of all, it has no dots all over it. It has no ribosomes on it. So it doesn't have anything to do with creating proteins. That's kind of the first thing to know. To me, it kind of looks like tube worms, if you know what a tube worm is. But, it looks like coral to me, inside of, like the bottom of the ocean, where people are scuba diving. I see a bunch of coral here. So if you see this coral look or these tube worms, that's probably the smooth ER, the smooth endoplasmic reticulum. And it has many roles, depending on what cell that we find it in. Most of the time though, the money answer on the test is making lipids. So, in general, we say the smooth ER makes lipids, like cholesterols, triglycerides, the steroid hormones, including the sex hormones, androgens, and estrogens, and testosterone. These things are created in smooth ER. In some cells, like muscle cells, for instance, it is not called the smooth ER, it's called the SR, the sarcoplasmic reticulum. And we'll see that more when we get to those chapters. But it stores calcium very specifically in those cells. The Golgi body, we kind of mentioned it before. It does usually draws green on many, many, many of the figures out there. It kind of looks like a rough ER, doesn't it? But there's no dots all over it, there's no ribosomes on it. So we wouldn't confuse it with the ER. And we wouldn't confuse it with the smooth ER either, because it just doesn't look like coral, right? It doesn't look like those tubular structures. So, it is folded, it is membranous, but it's not an ER. Even though it kind of looks like it. And it's not attached to anything usually. It's usually floating freely in the cytoplasm. So, four big things are usually what I talk about here. And I've put them all in green so they see them very, very specifically. So let's kind of remember. Let's put our rough ER, remember it's kind of a ribbon-looking thing with dots all over it, which we call ribosomes. And remember, it's going to take its product that it makes and package them into vesicles, and send them to the Golgi. We could also see something like this. Little tubular guys, the smooth ER. So, it is making lipids and so forth. We'll just kind of show it like that. Also putting them in vesicles, and shipping them to the Golgi. So the first thing I've got here is receives vesicles from the rough ER and the smooth ER. Whatever's being packaged up by those guys is initially shipped. You can kind of see that here. Looks like vesicles arriving at the Golgi. Okay, so what? Well, now we're going to process those products that we made in the ER. So we're going to modify. Again, you can add a tail, clip a tail off, rearrange the molecule, add a little sugar to it, or whatever, make a glycolipid or a glycoprotein, and then repackage those, right? Take that raw product from the ER, change it, it'll modify and repackage it, and then put it in other vesicles, and have those sent out the other side to the distribution, for distribution. So, secretory vesicles will deliver the product once it's been modified and repackaged. So four things that the Golgi body does. Receive products from ER, changes them, modifies them, repackages them, and then delivers them through vesiculation using vesicles. A mitochondrion is what you see in this image. It looks to me like a jelly bean. And you see that smooth outer membrane that I just drew the arrow. And then inside is this folded-up membrane. And you see that here on the inside. So it's a double membrane system, but it's more like a jelly bean than anything we've seen before. So, smooth outer membrane, folded inner membrane makes crests, right? We know that word, the folds. The fancy word for that is crista, which translates as crests, right? So we have the folded inner membrane creates crista. And this is very important if you're trying to make energy inside of a cell. So in kind of baby biology, we call this the power plant of the cell. It's not the best thing, but it does work when we're first starting. So, we have to do this aerobically. Again, reminding me, we have to do this with oxygen. And we're going to turn, basically, sugar, glucose, and I'm keeping this way too simple, but we can make it more confusing later on other talks. And turn this into ATP. This is the purpose for mitochondria, is to generate ATP through aerobic cellular respiration. Other interesting things you see about it, if I can get my text off of there, you can see it better. Maternally inherited, this little factoid contains its own loops of DNA, which it does copy independently of a cell, and allows it to create special proteins that the cell cannot create. Because the purpose of mitochondria, and that is the plural by the way, if I put RIA, mitochondria, that's the plural of it. We usually talk about these in the plural because we definitely find more than one inside of a cell. And you could find thousands of mitochondria in some cells. Again, cells that need a lot of ATP, like cardiac cells, muscle cells, brain cells perhaps, are going to be making a lot of ATP to function. So you probably will find many, many, many mitochondria inside of them. Lysosomes, again. We see this lys word, we've seen multiple times. We've seen in different forms, but lys always refers to breaking something. Som, even though I haven't said it yet, I don't believe, refers to soma sometimes, refers to the body. Right, a somatic reaction has something to do with the body. So lysosomes are breaking bodies, right? Bodies that break stuff. And that kind of helps you think about what they are. Again, in baby bio, we talk about these being the janitors of the cell. Again, it doesn't work on high-level classes, but it works on most tests. These are the cleaner uppers. If there is some sort of debris, or mess, or problem inside of the cell that needs to be cleaned up, call in the lysosomes. So what do they do? Well, they've got lots of dozens. Some books say over 40, near 50, different digestive enzymes inside of them. And what they'll do is they'll pick something up. Perhaps it's, you know, some dead bacteria, pieces of viruses, toxins from some prior invasion, waste products. They'll grab them, they'll pull them in, and they'll digest them, they'll tear them up. And they'll either recycle the products, or they'll kind of spit them out of the backside of the cell. Broken organelles can also be recycled with lysosomes if they've lost their function. Don't just keep them hanging out in the cytoplasm. Have somebody clean up that mess, right? In the bone cells, we see lysosomes breaking apart the bone to release calcium into the blood to do important things like move your muscles and things like that. And then, in very extreme cases, we see, like, say, you have some tissue that's very damaged and needs to be gotten rid of. And instead of trying to repair the tissue, the body decides, let's just get rid of it, right? This is called autolysis. Auto, referring to yourself. And break again, I see the root, again, self-break, right? To break yourself. So sometimes lysosomes can eat the cell from the inside out and destroy it, especially if it's already injured or has some major genetic defect. You could see that the cell is told to end itself. Another ball-like organelle are called peroxosomes. When you see a peroxosome, again, you see that root som telling you it's some kind of a body, but it's not like a normal janitor. It's not a lysosome cleaner-upper. It's a different type of cleaner-upper. I often call these guys the hazmat crew, right? If there's a bad, bad chemical spill, you don't call the janitor to come clean that up. You got to call the professionals in the white suits that come with the special equipment. So this is what I think of when I think of a peroxosome. It does have its own enzymes, but they're not digestive enzymes. There's some sort of chemical enzyme that works to neutralize dangerous substances, like peroxides that have built up inside of a cell. So detoxify is a really good verb. You know, it's going to detoxify the cell. It's going to get rid of really nasty, dangerous substances that are way too gross for a normal janitor, like a lysosome, to clean up. So these are the specialized cleanup crew guys. Cytoskeleton, as it sounds like. Inside of a cell, and in this picture, the background, you see two giant cells. You see their kind of blue-green-looking nuclei here. But what's more interesting to me, are all the yellow threads. And if you look behind them, you see some grayer or purpler threads behind there. And all of these threads are protein fibers that make up a structure called the cytoskeleton. So a tangled network of proteinaceous, made of protein. Some of them are called microtubules. Again, because they look like little tiny tubules. You won't be able to see that in this image, but they kind of look like long pipes or long soda straws. Some are called microfilaments, that, you know, look more like you would see here in this image, these thread-like fibers that stretch throughout the cytoplasm. What are they doing? Well, they're doing much the same that your skeleton is doing for your body, right? Support, shape. Sometimes these allow vesicles and other substances inside of a cell to be pulled across from one side to the other. If you're over here, created, and you need to get out here to the edge of the cell to be used, well, sometimes you can grab a ride on one of these threads and kind of have yourself pulled along with special helpers to help you walk over to where you need to be delivered. Sometimes a vesicle doesn't just float, it needs to be pulled by cytoskeletal threads. This is called intracellular transport. These do sometimes serve as threads that anchor the membrane. And we saw this when we talked about peripheral proteins acting as anchors in our previous lectures. Alright, I could make this picture a little bit better if I were to take some threads and make a halo around it. Around what? Around those purple guys right there. To me, those two little purple guys look like- To me, those two little purple guys look like pieces of pasta. So that always was a help for me back in the day. I kind of saw those two pieces of pasta, and they're mysteriously arranged at a right angle, right? They're at a right angle. This guy is this way, and this guy is that way, right? So if you see these pieces of pasta, usually near the center of a cell, and they have this special arrangement where they've got three pipes, and then three pipes, and then three pipes, 27 total. You're looking at something called a centrosome. Now, what's the function of it? Well, very easily, it's that it's going to help us do mitosis. And we're going to see mitosis in the next lecture. The two pieces of pasta are called centrioles. And again, they're usually surrounded by a halo of microtubules, like I drew earlier. And that would make the centrosome, the entire center body, right? Centrosome. But the centrioles are asked about more on tests. The centrioles, they're going to actually make the spindle fibers. They're going to do the actual work when we get to the process of cell division. Sometimes cells can have things sticking out of them, like beyond the cell membrane. One of these things could be called cilia. If I were to draw some cilia, you could draw a cell membrane, and you could just put some small hair sticking out, just like this, like eyelashes, or very small whiskers sticking out. And these things will beat back and forth. And as they whip back and forth in place, they'll move debris from one place to another. So that's what it says down here. Small hair-like structures that help propel substances toward a destination, right? Say, as you're sleeping, and we find these in the respiratory system, all the stuff that you've breathed in all day long will be moved by cilia as you sleep up to your upper respiratory tract, where you can cough it, or sneeze it, or spit it out of your nose in the morning, right? These are called cilia. Now, flagella are different. In fact, they are very long, whip-like tails that spin around like a motor on a boat. And you can picture, if you put a motor on the back of this boat here, it's going to do one thing, right? It's going to go forward. So anything with a flagellum, and I can show you that root here. That's the singular, a single flagellum. And that really should be the term that's taught because the only cell that we talk about in human anatomy that even has a flagellum is the sperm cell, which you see pictured here. So to say flagella, the plural, is not usually necessary in a human anatomy discussion. So long, protein, whip-like tails, and that's what flagellum means, is whip. And it provides motion, but only in one direction, unidirectional motion. You will go forward, you will go forward, you will go forward, until you bump into something, and then you may change direction that way. Alright, our final structure here, that extends from a cell, are called villi and microvilli. So when you hear villi or microvilli, the first thing to think of is fingers. So I see lots of little fingers here, sticking out of a cell. And this here that I'm drawing along, that would be the cell membrane here, cytoplasm underneath it. So sticking up are these long fingers. And if you can imagine, some of it you can kind of see, but little fingers on top of the fingers, right? Teeny fingers on top of the fingers. Well, this kind of sums it up then. The bigger fingers are called villi. And the teeny, teeny, tiny fingers on top of the tiny fingers are called microvilli. So special finger-like protrusions. What are they for? Well, you can think of them either, you know, helping to absorb particles into a cell, or sometimes they are creating certain substances that are being released or secreted out of the cell. So special finger-like projections, if they're long and big, they're usually called villi. If they're teeny, teeny, tiny fingers on the fingers, we call them microvilli. They are found all throughout the walls of the digestive system. And that's almost the default answer for if you see villi or microvilli, screaming out, you're in the digestive system, is a really good place to go. Alright, we took a nice little tour through the cell. Thanks for watching all the way. If you enjoyed it, check out some other videos in the series, and I will see you for the next one. Bye-bye.